Hey, Mr. Mayor, we're live and ready.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Seldovia City Council, Monday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, times four thirty six, and this is a work session. Um, we have one topic to discuss tonight, and that's the reconsideration of application to rezone waterfront resub number one lots two, three, and four, block thirteen. Um, and most of the centers around um, the one item of the criteria, uh, item number seven, um, that's titled best interest of the public. And I don't know who wants to take it first, Heidi or Liz or Randy or?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you'll see that in the work session packet, there's a staff memo at the beginning and for council consideration, the Seldovia Planning Commission has forwarded this memorandum, um, the request for reconsideration of the rezoning application at their January eighth meeting. There is a brief timeline of events in here um, that the planning commission felt that they could better answer the best interest of the public. And so provided this on page seven of your packet, um, an executive summary and um, a reconsideration memo, as well as Ms. Martin has submitted some further comments which are on page. All right, yes. The request for reconsideration memo goes through page thirty, thirty-five of the packet, and then Ms. Martin's comments will be on page thirty-six with um, additional information on the best interest of the public. And I don't know. Ah, yes. And in the lay down, you'll find some further comments from Ms. Martin um, regarding her public comment and um, my response from city manager Gagel in regards to the information provided. So.
Um, sure. Yeah, if I was just gonna add on, so if you look at that memo, uh, just trying to kind of lay out the steps. So that consists, that consideration at the top of um, the Seldovia Planning Commission requests the Seldovia City Council consider introducing a new ordinance to amend waterfront resub. Uh, and that's the, the three properties we've been discussing based on new information provided by the Seldovia Planning Commission regarding Seldovia municipal code. Uh, this came out when in discussion with the, with legal about the appeal process and how that would work. It was determined that we needed to send the um, the information from the Seldovia City Council about the ordinance ha- having failed back to the planning commission so that through resolution, they could formally uh, deny the application and then start the appeal process. But further in discussion, um, we talked about how part of the discussion on the city council level was that there was a deficiency um, in the information provided by the Seldovia Planning Commission that uh, item number seven wasn't complete. So in speaking with legal, um, it was suggested that if there was interest from the applicants um, and the Seldovia Planning Commission, that that item could be completed and then presented back to the Seldovia City Council as new information to reconsider uh, the request. So if that's something that the Seldovia City Council would like to do with this information, um, and you'll, and that is the executive summary that's provided um, in the packet from page seven through to page twenty-six. Uh, so a lot of information since the work session. Um, if that is something that based on this new information, the Seldovia City Council is interested in um, reconsidering this rezoning amendment. Um, the amendment would have to come back in an ordinance form, so it would be uh, at an upcoming meeting would be introduced as an ordinance, and then there would be a public hearing to follow. Um, depending on the determination of the Seldovia City Council, either way, uh, we do request that there is uh, justification or findings attached based on the determination. Um, and the Seldovia Planning Commission did provide a, a nice tool that we did re uh, iterate and put in here in the packet on page. We've got multiple, multiple page numbers, so let me double check, make sure I've got the right one, five. Um, and that is just labeled decision-making tool for council, and it lays, lays out um, the criteria provided in municipal code. And then if you have a finding or a justification determination based on that finding or any other direction you want to go with it, um, whether it's reconsidered or not, that can help uh, when the consideration is sent back or the, the determination is sent back to the Seldovia Planning Commission in their response to the applicant. Uh, and then so you'll also see on page five, uh, well, starting not really on page four, there's a staff summary of the findings. These are the original findings from the Seldovia Planning Commission on July fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four that was forwarded to the Seldovia City Council. And for, and justification or reasoning for the recommendation to amend the zone. And then in the attached memorandum, uh, it's, we just summarize it here really briefly. Um, in the memo that you'll find in the attached memorandum from the Seldovia Planning Commission, their high-level findings regarding that amendment procedure criteria seven. So you'll see there's multiple parts to that uh, criteria. It's not just in the best interest of the council, or sorry, in the best interest of the public. Um, you can see it fully laid out on page three. It is eighteen ninety-seven point zero one zero B seven. It is in the best interest of the public, considering the effect of development permitted under the amendment and the commute, commute, uh, cumulative effect of similar development on property within and in the vicinity of the area subject to the amendment and on the community, including without limitation effects on the environment, transportation, public services, and facilities and land use patterns. So that was the Seldovia Planning Commission's effort to address um, that question more fully. Uh, next steps would be, this is on the meeting agenda for tonight. Uh, and then, you know, based on your guys' uh, determination, whether like as uh, whether you're going to introduce a new ordinance or not, um, and then attach findings um, first, further based on that. So uh, as city clerk Diamond pointed out, uh, there are the two public comments. Um, the most recent ones, as well as you'll see the attachments on page six. Um, the, there's the request for reconsideration, the comments and the previous packet information. And then following that is the unimprovements and the minutes uh, from all the previous discussions regarding this topic. And then uh, just for reference, that Seldovia municipal code eighteen ninety-seven amendment procedures. So if you have any questions, uh, please let me know. Oh, and I would like to point out that uh, Chair Sweet from the Seldovia Planning Commission is here for questions as well.
Hey, thank you, Heidi. Yeah, obviously, um, a lot of information here, big, big packet. And so one question I have is somewhere in here, and I went through this entire packet and I didn't, um, yeah, I gotta download the lay down because of the power outage. I didn't get that till late, uh, or it wasn't put out till late. Um, the, there was the original findings from um, the original findings from the planning commission on page five of the packet. And then on this uh, decision-making tool for council, is there one of these that is already filled out from our last uh, meeting? Maybe it's in the minutes here and I missed it.
So there is not, but you will see in the minutes and you'll see in the resolution to count uh, to the planning commission, and that starts on page thirty-nine. Uh, when this was sent back to the planning commission um, to deny the application. It does state in here on the last whereas on page forty, during council discussion for ordinance twenty-five zero-two, the Seldovia City Council discussed that the history and intent of urban renewal and previous comprehensive plans was for that area to be zoned commercial marine, now commercial business, and noted that the amendment procedure evaluation criteria number seven under Seldovia municipal code eighteen ninety-seven zero one zero B, referring to the best interest of the public, was not fully addressed by the application or by the Seldovia Planning Commission. Uh, ordinance twenty-five dash zero-two failed following deliberation by the city council and public testimony. And then you'll see the ordinance does follow that as well as minutes. And those are the minutes from the packet. So there, they stay unimproved, but they since have been approved. So you have to go to the end of this packet to find all of the approved minutes. And they do go in order. So December fourth was the um, Seldovia Planning Commission. Let's see, November twenty-fourth, Seldovia Planning Commission. And they keep going back on page ninety-four. That September ninth regular meeting uh, has, and that's ninety-five, page ninety-five actually has ordinance twenty-five oh-two. Um, and then it does say there was discussion on the comprehensive plan, urban renewal and evaluation criteria number seven from the Seldovia municipal code. Um, in the reference to the best interest of the public, there was also discussion on the commercial business sub, district subcommittee, there's only recommendations, and historic boardwalk project. And then you'll see that um, Kennedy and Mayor Campbell spoke in support, Rojas, Langbert, and Swick spoke in opposition. Uh, two petitioners spoke in support. Uh, Plan, Planning Commission Chair spoke on the process, one member of the public spoke in opposition. And then um, the, the ordinance fails with a vote of one yes and four no and one absent. So not a lot of information. It'd be better, it'd be great to have that a little bit better clearly defined. Um, base, based on the determination, whatever that may be.
Yeah, it's just a little unfortunate that we didn't put that into the tool to have something to build off of instead of starting from scratch again on one through, one through six. So um.
Yeah, and you can see, and I mean, and that was part of the discussion is that, you know, the, what is the justification? Especially if they are going to continue to be a business. I remember council member Swick, former council member Swick's discussing that. Um, I'm trying to go back and remember, I, I guess I'd have to re-listen to it again. But it was pretty general, so um, that the one through seven is, is the criteria stated, and then you can see the Seldovia Planning Commission's justification or findings based on that. So it would be how, you know, I guess it's just a matter of you guys want to build on that on their one through seven, or if you have a a difference um, of, of opinion, that would be helpful to hear.
Yeah, I think the crux of this is obviously number seven, one through six, we should be able to. I mean, yeah, I don't think there was any disagreements with the, the findings on that. It was just the the lack of clear direction on number, on number seven. So and then that's what's basically prompted us to be where, where we're at here. Um. Okay, so then um, number seven, I'm just going to the executive summary on page seven there. Um, do we, let's see, what time is it? Four forty? Uh, can we maybe get, let's see, we can just open it up for general questions and then maybe we can have Randy um, walk us through a little bit on, on the exact, I can read this, but yeah, obviously there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of things here. Um, in this, in the executive summary here. So and then obviously on page seven, uh, the high-level findings with respect to the criteria. That is each, that is basically that statute piece. It's broke down into, into all the pieces and parts, right? Then the best interest of the public and then um, anything affecting the well-being, the rights. I mean, you guys. So the way I take it is that planning basically broke all the areas of that down and then, then there's in bold is there um, is what they came up with on that.
Uh, that is my understanding, Mr. Mayor, but I will pass a uh, mic to Chair Sweet.
So the, the findings are based on the application um, that was submitted and then um, and they were validated. And so that, the findings that you have um, in the staff summary um, are, that is what that is. And then um, as well as the commission reviewing those. And then those were the, those were the basis of our recommendation to you. So that's, that's where that came from.
Okay.
And then, and then the, the deficit in terms of um, not having enough information on item seven, um, then um, the information that we found on what each element of that was is explained with each, with, with each sort of phrase of that particular criteria.
Yeah. Perfect. You might as well go ahead and probably hang on to that, Randy, because I'm sure there's going to be a few more questions here as we get rolling through this. So let's just go ahead and um, open it up then to general discussion, then I guess from, from council on um, on council's thoughts on um, what planning came up with here in reference to the, the findings with respect to the criteria here, addressing for now specifically item, item seven here. Uh, page eight, I think is the best one to kind of, kind of look, look through that um, in a, in a nutshell there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Um, well, a lot of information, a lot of information put together. I'm still very much confused and not clear about the justification of moving forward with rezoning. I think when we had this last meeting, when we all voted on it and there were testimony, Crystal Collier was adamant and uh, Laurel Hills both were very adamant about the origin of these lots and what their meaning were for the lots. And I'm not sure if the justification of number seven for the public can be looked at in two ways to me. The other way is looking at it, those lots, um, well, Jerry Strannick's lot was Fred Alsos's um, building that he had his fishing gear in. And then when Tuggle built his place and then um, Lathene's bought their place and built, they bought it and built it under the, under the impression that they were going to be a business. And when we allowed that to happen, they built the houses that were behind them were blocked off. They lost their view. They lost everything, but because the city sold these lots to individuals to have businesses on the waterfront, not on the, not in the, not in the uh, slough, but in the, the harbor district, in the harbor area. And those people, buildings were behind their loss, their view, lost what they had because these people who bought those lots said they were going to be businesses. And then we allowed it for that reason. So in retrospect, um, the lots that were sold were to be businesses. I adamantly believe that that needs to continue. The option of having a business or not having a business is nil and void because most people will not have a business. And the city goes backwards trying to help and promote businesses. And so I'm not really sure why they're pushing so hard not be in the zoning of having a business there if they're truly going to have a business. But I really think the city, the, the planning and zoning, they look at their picture of how the city works. City council has to look at everything that the planning commission does, plus the finances of Seldovia now and in the future, the present and the future. And for my, and where I stand, and most people, there has been no one who's come up to me and has said, I want those places rezoned. Everybody who spoke to me said, though, whoever bought those lots, they bought it with intention of. And when the planning is zoning, or when the comprehensive plan was put together, there's a heck of a lot of stuff in that comprehensive plan that the city either because we don't have the staff, we don't have the support, the finances to pick and choose what's in the comprehensive plan. But as it works out, when people, when they develop these comprehensive plans, people come forward and they, here's an idea, and they write it down, and it becomes a bigger idea. Those three lots should never have been included in the, the new districting of the slough district. They should have never been part of it. I missed it. I was part of the council at that time. Um, so I, to me, there's still no real justification of rezoning those lots to let them become just, just houses, residents, pretty much, if people choose to do just that. And the fear that I have and for the future of Seldovia is that those lots, when somebody gets in, when Jerry Strannick decides to sell his lot, it can become a residence. It is, that's it. That's what it will be. It'll be our, our beautiful waterfront becoming nothing but a residential area. And Tuggle's old house, it could be the same thing. And then Lathene's. And somebody could come in to buy all three of them in the future, and it becomes one big, big monstrosity to building there. What does the city of Seldovia still get property tax? Absolutely. And we'll always get that. And that's our lifeblood to help us. Sales taxes, the other part helps of support our, our budget. So I really, really do not see, and reading through this packet, packet is extensive. And I really still do not see the benefit to the public or the citizens of Seldovia when we are making a budget every year trying to save nickels and dimes, and we're ready to give away three potential businesses in our community. That's just not right in my book. So I would ask if there's somebody there can tell me that justification to change that zoning is in the best interest of everybody in Seldovia and in the community. And that it would be in our financial best interest, and I would like to hear. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. Anyone else?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Um, thank you very much, Vivian. Um, I'm a little froggy today because I've been sick. And so I was glad to have you kind of speak and really work through actually what I was trying to remember how we had discussed this last time, because it really was a comprehensive discussion that we all kind of were asking each other these same questions. And today, when I was going through it, I was coming to that same conclusion. Because the only advantage I can see of changing the zoning is for those that own those properties when it comes time to sell. It becomes much easier for them to sell the property because as we know, it is a little bit harder be, when you, unless a business is already looking at wanting to move into one of those properties, it makes it much easier with the ability to just have it be lived in, long-term rent um, tenant, or somebody who just wants to have it as a, a cabin to be it and every once in a while, which I'm a hundred percent supportive of, but I think those properties we had discussed, that's important that we don't lose that. Um, it's, it's been hard enough for us to keep businesses here and encourage businesses and without having spaces that are in prime locations. Um, that makes it harder. And the fact that they're meeting all the criteria, that's why I couldn't understand. That was my only, the only thing that I could come up with of why those people living there would would want that. And I understand, I mean, it makes it better for them, but that doesn't make it better for anybody else that I can come up with. And just the day after that meeting, one of the petitioners came to me and actually said they agreed with everything we came up with and was really glad it went that way. And that also kind of sat with me as well. But I was like, okay, I feel good because, you know, we're trying to do the best interest of the people. So to me, that spoke that it was also the best interest of the people. And same as you, I haven't had anybody come up to me and um, say that they want those changed, only that they don't see why it would need to be changed. So thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Anyone else? Yeah, you have to move your mic closer, John.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, yep, that's a little better.
Okay, um, as, as you know, I was, I voted in favor of this. And uh, seeing, you know, based on the, the zoning board's recommendations. And I, to be honest with you, I haven't had a chance really to look at this stuff due to the power outages and and everything today to take a look at the information provided here. But I guess my concern is, has been from day one with this whole deal has been, we can't even, we can't even keep active businesses in the parcels that we have along the waterfront anyway. We have a bunch of seasonal or non-functioning businesses as it is. And whether it's right or wrong, I just, I see those three community members as community members of this community that are willing to invest here uh, with whatever they're investing and how they do it. And I just, I think it buys us more bad will than it does good. Um, now, like I said, I'd like to have a chance to read the stuff a little bit more here before we make a decision. Um, I, I still, at this point, I'm still in favor of, of changing the zoning. Um, I'm not opposed to us, you know, drilling down in the paperwork here. Maybe something will change my mind. But uh, um, I don't have an issue with it. I, there was some suggestions that maybe it could be done for a, you know, for a few years and see what the effect might be with a moratorium and the council revisiting it down the road. I heard some of those comments. Um, I'm not opposed to that. But uh, to add more restrictions or not to try to help uh, the people that are here. Um, I don't know, it's kind of frustrating. I, I know of several people that own waterfront lots along here that have been involved in it that have basically stated to me that they're done investing in Seldovia. Uh, and it's, it's just sad to see them come and go like that. I, I'd like to see enough business here to be able to operate my own business annually. And there just isn't. There's not enough, there's not enough people here. And uh, you know, it, it, it's really frustrating um, to not be able to, you know, I spent half a million dollars on the waterfront and I can't be open year round. Um, just because there's not enough business. Now, if all of those waterfront lots along here that are in this zoning, that's not affected in this, if they were all active and busy, it might be a different situation for my vote. Um, but they're not. Um, you know, they're, they're just basically vacant businesses or they're for sale. And if, if that wasn't the case, I'd feel differently. But that's not the case. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
I'll just chime in real quick here too. Yeah, no, I was definitely, um, I was in favor of this the last, the last time as well. And I think one thing, I mean, we forget is, well, I don't know if we forget it, but one thing that I've found is just in, since coming to Seldovia eleven years ago is that I just don't see a lot of things changing with the old guard. Um, it seems that, I don't know if it's people are just afraid of change. Um, Seldovia will never have an opportunity to grow and prosper if, if leaders are afraid to make a decision to and to make a change. Um, and I'm not saying, you know, that this is gonna, gonna solve everything, but I think when you, when you go back, you look at the comprehensive plan, i- at that time, that was a group of our citizen leaders. That's what they came up with. They talked about this area specifically. They gave the recommendations. And I do appreciate the lessons learned down here, Randy, that you guys put down here. And I, I think what, what happened is, yeah, we, we failed to act. The, the city just failed to act after that. Had that same group and that same uh, um, mentality at the time and the same um, you know, progression, the, the momentum that was going on, had they, had they then took the next step forward and went to go draft an ordinance and tried to get that changed at that time, it probably would have been successful at that time. But here we are, um, you know, eleven years later, talking about this and, you know, I think either half the people or most people have either forgotten or have amnesia about, about this. And some people in testimony clearly disagree even with what, what our leaders back then had. And some people in testimony clearly disagree even with what, what our leaders back then had come up with. So and I absolutely disagree with that. I, I, I can't say, I can't change what happened eleven years ago. All I know is that was the public sentiment at the time, and that's what should have happened. They should have moved forward with it. But city screwed up and that just is not what happened. So, which is super unfortunate. And now here we are eleven years later, having to put, try to put the pieces back together. I think, um, so there was an application, there was a process, we went through the process. And yeah, there is a lot of opinions, a lot of opinions on what, I mean, I went back and I was reading Leslie's comments. She's absolutely right. There were so many people injecting their opinions about what should even go there. Who gives a crap what goes there? That, that's none of, that's nobody's business. If they're gonna have a business, they can do whatever they want to do within the code. And I think people were stuck and hung up on that. And I think there's just been way too many personal feelings that got injected to this. And people aren't following our process. Our process is clear. You, you file the petition, you go through the planning process, and now here we are. Okay, it lost. Great. Now we've exhausted that, that process. Now we're in the appeals process. If you go back to what the code said about the, having um the, the, doing the findings, all of that, working through the criteria. The only thing that was really in question was number seven, it is, is it in the best interest of the public? And I think, looking at this, going through each one of these, I'm Vivian was asking the question about, somebody tell me, well, I think it's fairly clear when you, when you read this, I mean, it's broken down. It, you know, on page eight, in the best interest of the public, anything affecting the well-being, the rights, health, or finances of the public at large. And then the, the statement that planning came back with. The crux of the matter of best public interest is whether to retain the requirement for businesses along the port waterfront to preserve for the future. So that would be denied rezoning or to align with the public interests expressed for the preferred land used defined in the, in the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan. You would approve it. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a, um, it's not really a pro or con. It's just, it's an either or from, from where, where you're at. And so, yeah, I, I agree with the latter part of that, that that was the plan at the time. It should have been implemented. We should have moved forward. And, you know, if I'm working through this criteria, then I would vote on that piece of it. Approved seems reasonable to me. The next piece of that was the effective development permitted under the paragraph, under the amendment. There are no undeveloped lots in this vicinity. The neighborhood has the character and appearance of a residential area. So again, I think all this hype about people building the big monstrosity hotel, all that stuff. They can build whatever they want there under either zoning, as long as it, as long as it um, conforms with the current code. So I, I, I don't see where that's, I don't see where that's an issue. So currently, the there's three residential structures there that have, you know, quasi businesses in them. Could someone come and tear tho- buy all three lots and tear them down? And build a, build a hotel, as long as it follows the code, absolutely they could. They could do that now. And maybe if that's the look everybody down on that end of town wants, then great, because that's what could happen, right? Or most likely, it's gonna stay as three individual type residents with smaller type businesses that would seem more fitting for that area. Which by the way, the entire area down there is already zoned that way. So to me, it does, we're fine. It's, it's, it's fear driving that one.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject.
Yep, go ahead.
Yep, I think, I think, I think you're um, right. What you're looking at and how you're looking at that is, is, is one way of looking at it. I think what we're still on the grounds of is that, that this, like I said, the city backs over backwards to help people come up with a business. So um, Ms. Martin, Mr. Lathene, and then Jerry, um, Jerry Strannick, each can have a business there. And it, we're nuts. I don't know what you're referring to about her problem with people telling her what she can have there or not have there. That's up for the city to determine what we have written down. Did the city not way back when enforce the laws that they had, enforce the rules? Yeah, they did not. They did not enforce the code that we had when you bought those lots, and that was on the city. But also, we bend over backwards trying to help people to have businesses. So in my mind, I just cannot get past the idea why we would turn those three lots over into residential only, because they have their choice. If they go that way, then they can have a business. They can also choose not to have business. And we're giving up that potential. Not right now, but twenty years down the line, who knows what Seldovia looked like? I hope it's a great moment place. But if we re- if we renege on our responsibilities as custodians of Seldovia, as city council members, then I think we're really doing unjust for the community, for the livelihood of Seldovia. And really benefiting, as Ashley said, the three property owners. I have nothing against the three property owners. I just believe that we would be doing the wrong thing to turn them into potentially residential only. And not have the waterfront be potentially our lifeblood of businesses. And we only ask a business to be open three months of a year. We don't ask a whole lot. We all know how tough it is to have a business, and we appreciate all those businesses that do try to survive. But we really do, the city office wants to work with people. If you want to have an art gallery, have an art gallery. If you want to have a B and B, all that is workable. So I, I, I'm just, I get very frustrated when I hear about how the city is telling people what they can and can't do. We have rules to try to guide us into the future, and that's what this is all about. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to hear from the public.
Yep, thanks, thanks, Vivian. Yeah, and I'm, I'm not trying to get into a, you know, tit for tat here on, on this, obviously. I just, um, again, I, I don't know, you know, if we as a, as a community go to, you know, revisit or update our comprehensive plan and the community finds the same way. Well, we obviously see we have, we have a split. We have a, a, a split base on this, you know, in terms of what people think should happen down with, with those three lots. So I don't know if, you know, the if a working group got together and they decided for the update of the com- comprehensive plan to follow the same recommendations as the two thousand fourteen group. And then it came right back to us. Would we be inclined to vote it down again? Because we don't agree again with, with the community? I don't know. I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there. So yeah, this is not, obviously, it's not an ea- easy decision, but for some. But um, yeah, I'll just, I'll leave it at that for now. So just trying to work, work through this and, you know, uh, follow, follow the process. So can open it up to um, any, anyone else?
We do have a member of the public that wishes to speak if counsel.
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Walt Sonnen, member of the community of Seldovia. Uh, I've spoken on this matter before. Uh, I'm I'm fully in agreement with Vivian's uh, opinion on this. All, I've made just, just a couple of points that I have made before. I won't go over my whole my whole thing. But I've spoken with several members of the committee that uh, drew up this, the twenty fourteen uh, comprehensive plan. And a part of that plan was to assign the area of town there as the SLU district. And I the members that I've talked to had, seemed like they had no intention whatsoever of changing those properties into um, something other than they were or are the, the commercial commercial properties. And I I don't think it's in the public interest. And I think that we as members of the community right now need to look forward as to what Seldovia will become in the future or what it can become. And I think there's uh, there's a good reason to keep these as commercial properties uh, for the future of Seldovia. Thank you.
Thanks, Walt.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's anything else, I think Chair Sweet would like to speak.
What's that?
Chair Sweet would like to speak.
So, um, I guess trying to help the council go forward. One question I would have is, do you, are you guys, is the council okay with the first six findings from the um, from the uh, planning commission? Um, or, or do those seem like they're, they align with your thinking or the facts that are presented there? Are those okay? Because part of what we're trying to do is understand what your thinking is, what in relationship to those criteria. So if you're if you're in agreement with those other six, you could just so state, and then we would have that documented that you agreed. And then from your, then on the seventh criteria, that's the one that you didn't have all the information. You, we, you have new information. So it seems that the question before you is that same tension between what was said in the two, twenty fourteen plan and what there, the feedback from the community.
Mr. Mayor, are we losing? I'm not here.
Yeah, I think we're
You know, then if you can just identify.
Yeah, Heidi, I don't know if you can hear us. We're yeah. Yeah, Heidi, can you hear us? Or Liz?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you now. You cut off for just a moment, but.
Yeah, we're, we're not catching much of uh, Randy's there on, on this end where everyone's freezing up. The, the bandwidth is, is freezing on us here.
Okay, I'll try to be quick. Um, so so quickly, that what I was saying is, on the first six criteria, if you agree with those, then you can document that you were in agreement or you accept those findings. And then on the seventh finding.
Frozen up.
Yeah, they're froze again here.
And that I would recommend is that there are conversations about updating the comprehensive plan, but perhaps and, and I don't know if there's like a way of like running a red stripe through specific areas of the plan, but just saying that that part may be suspended so that if, if that's your judgment, then what I think is really important is that as a community, we should do what we say. And so if we're determining that it, whatever the determination is, that should be, that should drive the things that we use to guide our development. And the comprehensive plan drives our development. So just overall, we need to move, work our way to a point where everything is aligned. And then it's not frustrating for the community members who want to align with what they think is what they're, what they're seeing is what we're stating. And we updated the deficiency because we want to make sure that a person can provide their request to the council with the best information to you. And then and then, you know, then we not use whatever the decisions are to move forward in a way that is fair and um, and clear to everyone. And, and we'll, you know, more work to follow, of course, but that's kind of where we're going. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Yeah, and we caught, we caught all, mo- most of that, that the very uh, first part of uh, when we got to, yeah, if we agree on six, we'll go, you know, on the first six. And if we um, going to the seventh, caught the last part about the, you know, the, the comprehensive plan piece, but the very first part of that. Missed on that about what you were, you were looking for, obviously, uh, we, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, we lost you there. Um, perhaps you could turn your video off. I would hate to turn our video off. But let's try it and see if that increases our bandwidth a little bit. Um, and I guess worst case scenario, we can turn ours off if we need to. Is that any better?
Um, yeah, if we don't, if we don't lose it. Yeah, if we don't lose it, that's, that's not a problem. Yeah, so we just, we just missed that very first part. When Randy was talking about when we got to number seven, prior to the comprehensive uh, plan piece about what she was um, what, what she was looking for on, on that. Yep.
Else, can you, if you, let me know if, if, if it gets jumbled and you can't hear. But if it helps, so for instance, number one of the criteria is the need and justification of the proposed amendment. And the need and justification provided is a ju- uh, justification was provided by petitioners that it meets the desired future land uses on page thirty-three of the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan. And then number two, whether the proposed amendment is in conformance with the comprehensive plan or will further the purposes of the plan. And you'll find that finding is the proposed amendment would align with the three parcels with the desired SLU district and the future preferred land uses within the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan. Number three, the effect of the proposed change on surrounding properties or the area. And number three finding is the effect of the zoning amendment on surrounding properties within the general area would be to align the zoning with the current use of the properties. Number four, the amount of undeveloped land in the general area, having the same district classification is that as, as that requested by the proposed amendment. And number four says there is no undeveloped land in the area. Number five, uh, will it be reasonable to implement and enforce? I'm froze.
Uh, there, Mr. Mayor, are you still there?
Yeah, they're, they're frozen on their end.
Oh.
Yeah, I think we, I think it's probably due to these power outages and everything that's been going on here.
This might not be a good evening for this.
Yeah. Heidi, can you hear us now?
Yeah, we're back. I'm gonna see if we can get Randy over here and switch our networks and maybe that will help. But um, I hear you. We, we may have to postpone this discussion if we can't get a handle on the technical to, to.
Yeah, are we, are you, are you guys using, you're spit with spots there, right?
Yes, but we have a backup with ACS, so we're gonna see if we can swap it real quick. If you wanna take a recess for five minutes?
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We can do that. Let's take a, let's take a five minute recess here. Yeah, because we need to get this fixed before the regular meeting. If, if not, we're gonna have problems. If, if not, we're gonna have problems. If, if not, we're gonna have problems.
But um, it looks like our time is cutting short. I'm so sorry about this. Uh, perhaps we should end this meeting um, until we can figure this out. And then um, at the next meeting, if you guys, at the regular meeting, if you guys want to continue this discussion, um, you can do it there or postpone it um, for a future work session, uh, depending on the appetite of the, of the council. But we are, we are still um, trying to figure out our bandwidth issues at this point.
Yeah, I know, that sounds good. Yeah, I'd like to try to at least have them corrected for the, the regular meeting there. So, and then we'll just see um, what we've got when the time comes at the, at the regular meeting, how, how we make do there.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, do you want to um, end this meeting then? And we will um, turn off the record and the uh, YouTube and we'll uh, keep working on our issue?
Yeah, so it's already ten tilts. Yeah, let's go ahead and then uh, we'll just go ahead and adjourn the uh, the work session officially here. And then come back in ten minutes and we'll be coming in on a, on a uh, sign back in on a new link, correct? On the, on the link for the regular meeting?
Um, it's the same link, Mr. Mayor, but you will have to probably sign out and sign back in.
Yeah, I'll probably just do that to reset everything. So, I would probably suggest that for anybody else online as well.
Okay, will do. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and end this meeting, so you'll have to sign back on.
Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks.